Well, welcome, everybody, to the Committee on Audit and Risk, our meeting today. And I would like to open up this session, first of all, asking the members of the committee if they've had a chance to approve the minutes, or to take a look at the minutes, and if they have any comments with respect to those minutes.
Excuse me, Walt, do you mind if I just take a rule call for that first?
Oh, no, not at all, go ahead.
Okay, starting online.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Cottner.
Here.
Dunn. Short.
Here.
Here.
Doncev.
Here.
Dunham. Gray.
Here.
Guadagnino.
Here.
Ice.
Here.
Jones.
Yeah.
Kubit.
Here.
Langsdale.
Here.
Welch.
Here.
And I have the Deloitte names as well. And go ahead, Walt.
Great. Okay, everybody, back to the approval of minutes, any questions with respect to the minutes? Okay, hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve them?
So moved. A purple.
All right, I hear two, I heard a second, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Great, Dan, let me turn this over to you on the roles and responsibilities matrix.
Yeah, I think, Walt, as I indicated to you, this is reflecting of the new meeting structure and the frequency of having four meetings, and the way we're going to be doing those, as well as the informational items are now listed below the roles and responsibilities that are covered in the meeting, so I have nothing else to say add, other than we are agreeing with respect to the things we had to cover in September, and we are on track to cover everything in this meeting that is necessary.
Okay, great, thanks, Dan. Any questions with regard to the roles and responsibilities matrix? And, Dan, I spoke to you about the one minor change that we can make, clarifying the CIO and the CISO responsibilities for this particular time, but I don't think there's any reason to go into that on this call.
Correct.
Okay, good. Gary Langsdale, are you on the line?
Yes, sir.
Are you here? Great.
I am.
Can you just take us through the risk subcommittee operating guidelines, please?
Okay, either I can, or Ted, do you want to say a word?
Or Ted, either one's fine.
No, that's all right, go ahead, Gary.
Hey, so, you have in your packet an updated set of operating principles for the risk subcommittee. There was one typographical change, but other than that, it is essentially our principles and our guidelines are the same as in prior years. It is a best practice for us to request that the audit and risk committee approve those operating guidelines for the coming year, so I would ask for approval.
Okay, Ted, do you want to add anything to that at all?
Uh, yeah, I want to, I want to add my very strong support for the guideline, because I think they address the most important role of the subcommittee, which is to try to identify unidentified risks and react to them, if that makes sense to everybody.
Yep. All right, so, Gary, we need a formal approval on this, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Okay, good, thank you, Gary, and Ted. All right, Joe, to the man.
Okay, thank you, Walt. So, in your material, you have a two-page cover letter with a thirty-nine-page set of financial statements. I'm happy to report this year, again, we have an unqualified audit opinion, or a clean audit opinion, from Deloitte. We do have representatives from Deloitte in the room as well. The clean opinion is on page seven of the financial statements. I'm going to be jumping around a little bit, I'll try to, I'll try to reference page numbers as I do so with my remarks about the statements today. Subject to your acceptance and approval of the statements today, I'll be issuing this letter to the full board with the audited financial statements for a brief overview at the November ninth board meeting. So, again, this is subject to all of your questions and any comments you may have, both on the letter and on the statements at this time. I'll just say, as an overarching comment, it was a very good year financially. Total net assets are up by about twelve percent, or one point one billion dollars, we're up to nine point nine billion on the net asset line. In the middle of the first page of my draft letter, you will see the three ratios that we traditionally track from the audit. You can see the operating margin, the spendable cash and investments to operations, and the total cash and investments to total debt are all up over the prior two years. One note I'll add about the operating margin, and we'll get into the statement of activities shortly. In the past few years, Penn State Health has been, you know, in double-digit margins, and the university, I think, has been a little bit behind that. This year, literally, we are on, the two margins are on top of each other, the university and Penn State Health are both right around that six point nine percent margin, based on the financial statements. So, it was a good year all around. Let me give a little bit more color to that. I'm going to move to the balance sheet, which is pages eight and nine of the audited financial statements. Assets are up nearly a billion dollars, or seven percent. Our total asset balance as of June thirty, two thousand eighteen, was fifteen billion dollars. The reasons for, the primary reasons for that increase, that billion-dollar increase in assets, cash was actually up by three hundred and twenty-seven million dollars. I should point out that that three twenty-seven, two hundred of that was the Highmark contribution, the capital contribution to Penn State Health, so that was the primary reason. And when we get to the net asset section, I'll note that there's a line item there called non-controlling interest, which is fairly unusual for higher education, but because of the fact that Penn State Health is consolidated to the university level, and that Highmark now, among a few other smaller entities, has a non-controlling interest in Penn State Health, that actually does carry through to the consolidated statement. So, again, back on the asset side, cash increased by three twenty-seven, that was the two hundred million from Highmark, and the remainder from the margins that I talked about, both at Penn State Health and the university. Investments also increased by about three hundred and fifty-four million, or about six percent, driven by market returns. There's a lengthy footnote, footnote three, in the financial statements, goes into deep details about the investment valuations, and the, you know, the market, mark-to-market practices we have. That's on, footnote three is on page twenty-two, and then our fair value measurements are on page twenty-five, goes into deep details around that, but, again, investments were up by about three hundred and fifty-four million dollars this year. Three hundred and twenty-seven million is also the number, and the increase in total investment in plant. That three twenty-seven is the same as the cash increase, so not to be confused with that, but it was also a three hundred and twenty-seven million, or seven percent increase in investment in plant. This year, we made a lot of progress on the chem and bioengineering, as well as the ag engineering buildings at University Park, trip hall at Barrend, new housing at Brandywine, and children's hospital expansion at Hershey were the other major drivers in the, or the plant assets this year. This year also reflects the completion of work line, the capital portion of work line, and the beginning of the SIMBA projects are also captured in that line item. Over, moving, flipping to the liability side of the balance sheet, liabilities actually decreased by ninety-five million dollars, or two percent this year, so you have a billion-dollar increase in assets and a ninety-five million dollar decrease in net, in liabilities, so if you add those two together, that's the one point one billion dollar net asset increase I talked about at the beginning. The lib, the decrease in liabilities was driven by a hundred and twenty-five million dollar decrease in the accumulated post-retirement benefit obligation, or what we lovingly refer to as the FAS 106 liability for the healthcare plan for retirees. You'll recall, that plan has been closed to current employees since January one, two thousand and ten. The remaining liability is the tail of not only employees who qualified it, qualified for the benefit at retirement, but also employees that were hired before January one, two thousand and ten, and may at some time be eligible in the future, and that's an actuarially determined liability. There's a very detailed analysis on this, I've shared it with Walt, I'm happy to go into any questions here, but the biggest driver for that hundred and twenty-five million dollar decrease in that benefit obligation was interest rates, and actually, a favorable trend line, too, are between those two, that was actually a two hundred million dollar decrease in the overall liability, between the actual trends, healthcare trends, and the decrease in the discount rate. That was a two hundred million dollar decrease, that was offset by ongoing interest and other accumulated liabilities on the existing, on the existing balance. So, overall, a good year on that. Walt, I didn't know if you wanted to go in any more details, I know I've given you the gory details about that, I didn't know if you wanted me to go in any deeper here.
No, I would just say, to be clear, the liability itself is, you know, a liability that takes place over twenty and thirty years, for the most part, and so when interest rates go up, it actually decreases the liability, because it decreases the net present value of those liabilities down the road.
Correct.
Would that be the best way of putting it, because that's really the biggest moving part of it?
That's correct, Walt, that's, thanks for that clarification, yeah, it's about a two point two billion dollar liability on the balance sheet, and so an interest rate move up, which is the trend line we're in right now, certainly has a big impact, when you think about that acting inversely on the balance itself.
Correct.
And, well, it is, I think the trend line is a twenty- or thirty-year tail, but, again, this will be in place as long as we have surviving employees that, who have qualified for the benefit, so this could go, this could go out fifty, sixty years easily, if not further.
Yeah.
But the, 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 part of the bell curve is in, is in that thirty, the thirty to forty year range.
Yep.
So, with that, continuing on the liabilities, our long-term debt also decreased this year by nineteen million dollars, or one percent. That was primarily, we did issue a small bond in the spring, as you'll recall, but that was, that was offset by the repayments we had on the other billion dollars worth of debt, as well as Penn State Health took out a long-term, or took down a long-term capital lease on one of their buildings, so that actually resulted in a net reduction of long-term debt of nineteen million dollars. And then, that, those were all offset by a twenty-four million dollar increase in accounts payable, which was primarily at our self-supporting entities, Penn State Health and the insurance. So, again, assets up, a billion, liabilities down, almost a hundred million, that's a, that's a good, good mix for the, for the year. The, if I move to the, the net asset category, the one point one billion, the unrestricted net asset category is up about nine hundred million of that one point one million, and we'll go into the statement of activities in a minute as to why some of those, why some of that balances up, but, again, as I mentioned earlier, two hundred million dollars of the increase is the capital contribution from Highmark, which is in the non-controlling interest line at the bottom of page eight, or at the bottom, sorry, at the bottom of page nine, on the liabilities and net asset side. Other notable items, a hundred and eighty-seven million dollar, or eight percent increase in restricted net assets resulted primarily from a hundred and eleven million of new restricted gifts during the year, and sixty-seven million dollars of net gain in the university's endowment. So, restricted net assets are fully analyzed in footnote two on page twenty of the financial statements. So, that's the balance sheet, I'll take a breath momentarily, if there's any questions about that, before I move to the statement of activities.
Um, Joe, that, you know, you, you mentioned that the, that, you know, that the capital spend was, you know, about a third of the increase in the balance sheet, three hundred and some odd million dollars, but, just, you know, for the audit committees, from the audit committee's perspective, the real capital spend was six hundred and eighty-two million dollars, and the reason it's three hundred million is because we had three hundred seventy-one million dollars of depreciation that we took, but the actual capital spend this year was closer to six hundred and eighty million dollars.
That's correct, that is correct, and we also monitor that through the, some of the ratios that we'll do for the finance committee, we'll actually, that's one of the ones we benchmark against the Moody's ratios, and our spend, our spend on capital has been healthy relative to the Moody's benchmarks for our, our rating category, and it's a double-edged sword, you're spending money, but the rating agencies want to make sure you're spending enough to keep your plant assets viable and healthy, and wanting, wanting students to come back, so.
Well, we, we approved, we approved that, that the increased spending, from a capital perspective at the board, what, last year, the year before, or so, so I think we should expect that we're going to be spending at a more healthy rate.
Correct, and, again, I would not, I would characterize it as healthy is the operative word there, I don't think it's over, I think it's, it's right size for where we are as an institution, and the, and the needs we have. If Phil Sitz would be from physical plant was here, he might argue it's not enough, and he'd like to see us invest more, but, from a, from a pure financial perspective, it's very healthy.
I think it's a well-balanced investment in our, in our facility's needs.
Yep, I would agree, I think every, every one of us recognizes that we need to do more on that side, for sure. Um, so that, that's the balance sheet, any questions, Ted, Don, Brandon, on the balance sheet, before he gets into the income statement?
Nope.
Okay. Um, go, go, go ahead, Joe, you can take us through the rest of it.
Okay, thanks, and I mentioned the operating margin already, four hundred and thirty-six million dollars, or about six point nine percent. Penn State Health's margin was about a hundred and fifty-five million of that four hundred and thirty-six, four hundred and thirty-six million dollars. Total operating revenues and other support rose by three hundred and five million in aggregate, or five percent. Our total revenues this year were nearly six point four billion dollars. Total expenses were, were five point nine billion dollars, and I would say, on the, on the revenue side, there's really nothing all that remarkable. Penn State Health increased, revenues increased by two hundred and three million dollars, or ten percent, that's the largest single increase. Among the other revenue items, tuition increased by about two percent, or thirty-five million dollars, and government grants and contracts increased by about sixteen million dollars, or three percent. Other than that, it was largely healthy growth on the revenue side, and then on the flip side of expenses, I would say, cost containment was the operative word, although the total operating expenses of five point nine billion were up by about a quarter, a quarter billion, about two hundred and fifty-one million. A hundred and ninety-four of that was at Penn State Health, which goes along with their revenue increase. If you look at E and G expenses by themselves, educational and general expenses, they were up only about thirty-nine million dollars, or one percent. The two primary drivers of that one percent increase were forty, were forty-seven million dollar increase in research expenditures, or about six percent, which was offset by a twenty-six million dollar decline in institutional support costs. So, again, a, a, a good news story on the statement of activities as well, in the operating category. On the non-operating activities, it was a four hundred and twenty-seven million dollar increase in net assets, that was led, we've already talked about the, the accrued post-retirement benefit obligation, two hundred and forty-four million of that favorable change that we talked about was recognized in non-operating activities at the bottom of the statement of activities there, and then also a hundred and seventy-seven million dollars of long-term investment returns, which is primarily, primarily related to the endowment returns, that's also recognized down in non-operating activities. So, again, overall, I'll keep it short and simply say, it was a very, it was a solid year, good, you know, moderate revenue growth and, and good cost expense containment.
Joe, I have a couple of questions for you. The first one is, you know, you mentioned an increase in the investment amount of three hundred and fifty-four million dollars in your, you know, in your write-up. First of all, I would assume that includes, and I'm just looking at the non-operating activities that you referred to on page ten, gifts and pledges of ninety-nine million in that investment amount, but, you know, we, we've been talking about the fact that we've been having record fundraising years of, you know, in order of magnitude, three hundred and fifty million dollars in the last couple of years, for sure, and so, and I know some of that is shown in other areas of the income statement, and some of it is gifts and kind, so can you sort of take us through, maybe the geography as to where the rest of the three hundred and fifty million comes in, and if you don't know, perhaps, you know, if you don't have it right at your fingertips, perhaps you could, you know, provide us with some sort of reconciliation to all that?
Yeah, well, Walt, another, another hundred and seventy-seven million was what I just mentioned, it was kind of the, the endowment growth, so that, if you take the ninety-nine and the one seventy-seven, that gets you up to about two seventy-six of your three fifty, your three fifty-four.
Yep.
And then, I'll, I'll be honest with you, if I can take you up on your offer, I wouldn't mind answering, closing the rest of the seventy-five million dollars kind of offline, if that's okay.
Well, but, but, let, let, let me back up, I'm not talking about endowment growth, I'm talking about new contributions to the university, that, I think I've got the right number, isn't it, I think we've been raising, maybe it's been three hundred million, or a little less than three hundred million a year, the last couple of years, and I'm, I'm talking about new money.
So, are, are you talking on the, are you talking about the development reported numbers?
Yes.
Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so, so some of the things that are different for financial reporting purposes from the development count, on the development side, some of the sponsored grants are captured in that number.
Yeah.
That's actually captured in a different category on the, on the financial statement revenue side. Another thing that's captured in the development reporting is revocable bequests, which are not counted here, if they're revocable bequests to the university, they, we can't capture them as revenue, and then, as you, as you mentioned, gifts and kind, so if you total up those three categories, there's something like a hundred and sixty million of, in those three categories, that would be reported on the development side, that wouldn't necessarily make their way to investments or gift reporting in the, in the financial statements, does that make sense? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, it, it does, and I, and I, and I get the fact that you can't book a revocable, a revocable bequest for accounting purposes, even though our development people probably feel like it's money in the bank, it's not, and I get that, and certain gifts and kind, I would assume that gifts and kind would increase some balance sheet number, some, I would think, probably, albeit at a smaller number than the, the, the person who's gifting the money thought it would be, but it would be interesting to sort of understand the geography on our balance sheet, and how that relates to what we've been talking about, how much money we've been raising on an annual basis.
Right, I, I think what I'd like to do, Walt, I think I've sketched out kind of a high-level reconciliation, but I'd really, I, I, to be more certain, I'd like to spend some time with Rich Bundy's folks, and make sure I, I can close that gap a little bit more neatly for you than I could do right now, today.
That's fine, I, I wasn't expecting, I know I, I kind of hit you cold with this, so my apologies, but I think it'd be great for us on the committee to see that.
Let, let me commit to get that back to you under, under separate cover.
Okay, um, and then I do have, I have one more question, and that is, you know, in the footnotes, it, it talks about our SIRS contribution, which the state of Pennsylvania billed us for another, an increase of another sixteen million dollars this year, which is, continues to go up and up and up. Um, can you just confirm, what is one percent tuition increase in this university is equivalent to how much?
Fourteen.
Yeah, yeah.
Fourteen million, Walt.
Correct.
Fourteen million dollars. So, so the increase that we've been billed by the state of Pennsylvania just this year is equivalent to another one percent tuition increase?
Right.
Or more?
More than.
Yeah, more than that.
Correct, that is correct, that's a function of those employer rates that have been creeping up, well, skyrocketing up.
Skyrocketing, yeah.
Um, we think they're about to level off, certainly not, we're not going to see what we've seen the last three to five years, but they still continue to march inexorably up.
Yeah, I think the skyrocketing, hopefully, Walt, is, is over, but as Joe just indicated, I think we can continue to expect more moderate escalation in those rates, and, you know, we've, Joe and I, with help from Zach Moore, have started a dialogue with, with the leadership at SCRS about, you know, mutually agreeable ways we can begin to address that issue, but that, that's a long-term conversation that we started.
And if, and if I were to look back on what that number was, let's say, six or seven years ago, is it up eighty million, a hundred million, I mean, how much is it up over, like, a seven-year period?
Now, over six years, it's up, it's up close to eighty million, it's, it's a dramatic, it's a tripling of the employer contribution over the last five or six years, Walt.
And Walt, there's actually, I think there's another board presentation on this specific topic as well, coming up on October thirty-first at the FT, the FDCP webinar.
Right. Yep.
So, if anybody wants, you know, wants to get depressed with numbers, come to the FDCP meeting and listen to the retirement system conversation.
Well, it's just, it's hard for us to control our costs, it's, I mean, you know, it's just, you get a bill in the mail every year, it's another one percent tuition increase for that, um, okay, that's what I thought. All right, let me, let me open up the, the floor to Ted, you, Don, Brandon, Cynthia, any questions that you guys have on the financial statements?
None, none for me.
Okay, Joe, you want to continue?
Uh, the last statement is the statement of cash flows on, on page twelve, and that's really kind of a function of a lot of the things we've talked about already, university operating and financing activities provided six hundred and eleven million and three hundred and fifty-two million of net cash flow, respectively, and the investing activity, and then our investing activities absorb six hundred and thirty-six million dollars of that cash flow, so the difference, the, the net increase in cash of three twenty-seven is a, is a component of the six eleven, and positive six eleven on the operating side, positive three fifty-two on the financing side, and then our investments, netted down by our investments, of six hundred and thirty-six million dollars. Walt, I know you're, at a, at a higher level, I know you've done a back-of-the-envelope, kind of looking at, at all the, the different moving parts of that, and it, the three hundred and twenty-seven million dollar cash flow really is a hundred and fourteen, as we discussed, about a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five of operating cash flow generated during the year, along with the two hundred million dollar investment from, from Highmark.
Yep, so, Joe, one more question, you mentioned that, that the new lease accounting laws, or laws, rules are going to have an impact on the university, obviously, you don't need to implement that until six thirty of next year.
Laurie, sit down.
Sorry. Okay, I think we discussed, um, we, we don't have to implement that.
Sorry, I'm late.
Oh, that's okay.
I had patience, I couldn't stop.
Um, okay, Joe, on the lease account, so you don't have to implement that until next year, how is that?
Actually, it's, actually, it's another year, Walt, it, it goes into effect July one of nineteen, which for us will be fiscal twenty.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize it's a, it's actually a year and a half for us now.
Right, right.
Okay, so are we doing any work in the back office at this point in time to, to quantify that, and if so, you know, what kind of impact do you think that's going to have to us?
Um, to borrow Gary Langsdale's phrase of what keeps me awake at night, this is one of those things, and it's keeping our, our financial reporting staff and our, our property inventory staff awake at night as well, they have done a lot of work, I, I wouldn't be comfortable putting a number out there yet, but Walt, if you looked, if you looked at the operating lease footnote, you could, that'll pretty much give you a guide as to what you can expect to be showing up as a liability going forward, and what we, what we're in the process of doing is kind of analyzing all those operating leases, we're talking about bringing in a new software that'll help us get the information and the disclosures that we and the disclosures that we need to, to, to have. Um, we have a little bit more time, uh, but we are working, I'll just assure you, we are working hard. We will have more for you at this time next year about the possible impact. I'm not ready to put it out there yet, other than to, to point you towards the operating lease note as, as something that we're going to have to absorb on the balance sheet. And, and when you think about it, it affects everybody. I mean, everybody has to do this. What will be laid bare is how reliant is your institution on operating leases versus any other institution? Because a lot of the ratios that involve debt, um, will be transformed by kind of bringing these leases on board. And it, it's not just Penn State, it's everybody. And it, it's really your relative position as to how reliant you've been on the operating lease side that will, that will come to the forefront. I think we're going to be fine, uh, from a ratio standpoint. Uh, I'm not yet comfortable. When, when I look around our peers in the Big Ten and others, I don't think we're any more reliant on that aspect than anybody else is. But we're just not going to know until everybody's results are out in fiscal 20.
Okay. Actually, the rating agencies have been given a path to a lot of people on the corporate side on this thing. So I, 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 I don't know that the impact will be as great as you think, um, on the debt side. But we'll see.
Yeah.
Um, okay, good. Walt, um, if there's, uh, I'll, I'll open up any more questions before we move forward to approve the financial statements. They're fine from my perspective. Obviously Deloitte is going to give us, uh, a, a clean opinion, um, on these financial statements. At least that's what they, they're showing us in draft right now. So, um, I'll open it up one more time. Ted, uh, Don, Brandon, Cynthia, any questions that you guys have before we go to approval?
Not for me. Just one question. When, when, when do we get, get that, um, clean statement from Deloitte?
Uh, we actually, subject to this vote right now, Brandon, if, if the audit committee accepts it, we'll be able to issue the clean opinion, uh, and, and I'll actually send the whole finalized package out to the full board in advance of the November 9th meeting, um, with the clean opinion in there.
Okay.
For all intents and purposes, Brandon, I think that the, uh, the audit is, is essentially complete at this point in time, other than, you know, cleanup items. And, uh, I think Deloitte is prepared to issue a clean opinion on what we know, at, at least as to what we know today.
Got it Walt.
So, okay, good. Well, if that's the case, then let me call for a vote. Um, and, uh, if I could have a motion and a second to approve the financial statements, we'll move forward.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, terrific. Um, all in favor? Aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Um, Joe, I just want to tell you, this is probably my fourth or fifth year doing this. Uh, you guys do a remarkable job on these statements. You really do. And, um, so my, my hat's off to you. Congratulations again on a successful year.
Thank you Walt, I appreciate that. It's a lot of people in our office that do it. It's not just me, trust me. It's, it's the village.
I know, I'd take the village on something like this.
No, but you, you would get the criticism if we weren't happy. So take the compliment.
Exactly. Said very appropriately Ted. Um, all right, Joe, I think we have a Nittany Insurance renewal to approve. Am I right? And that's it?
Yeah, and I'll just remind everybody, the background on Nittany Insurance, it's the university's captive insurance company. Uh, it's, um, it's actually done by a firm, Crow Horvath, that specializes in these, and one of the firms that, that actually specializes in these kinds of engagements. And we'll actually be reviewing those statements with the Nittany Insurance Company Board in November. But in advance of that, we need you to, um, we need this, because the amount of the engagement is over $25,000, we're actually requesting the full audit committee, according to our guidelines, kind of approve this. And I'm going to let Gary Langsdale chime in here. He's, he's technically the president of Nittany Insurance Company. So I, he's my boss on this one, so I'm going to let him talk.
Right back to the president.
I do.
Well, uh, thank you. Uh, so Nittany Insurance Company engages, uh, with an auditing firm based in Vermont that, uh, is Crow Horvath, which is a national firm. But their Vermont office has particular expertise in captive insurance companies. Uh, that's why we utilize them. Um, the timing of this is unfortunate and I will fall on my sword that I missed that Crow Horvath didn't ask for an engagement letter to be signed before the July meeting of this committee. Um, we've had a long conversation with them and next year's, um, audit engagement letter will actually be received before they start the engagement, which is a radical concept. Um, so we will have the new one, uh, it will be received sometime in April for your approval well in advance of this. So I apologize for jamming this in just as the year is being finalized. But, but we asked for a vote to approve. They've requested a 3% increase from $29,725 to $30,600. Um, given the nature of the changing audit requirements for insurance companies, just like, um, in the larger corporations, uh, we believe that this is reasonable, um, for, for their fees to provide Nittany with an audit.
And if I could just add one addendum, this is Joe again. Uh, the Nittany Insurance Company, along with every other subsidiary of the university, is consolidated into the audited financial statements we, uh, we just reviewed. Um, Crow, uh, Horvath, um, provides its own opinion on those standalone statements. That work is provided to, to Deloitte and Deloitte, um, relies on that work within the overall consolidated statement.
Right.
So, so we asked for a vote to approve the, uh, audit engagement of Crow Horvath for Nittany Insurance Company.
Do I hear a motion to approve that?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, we, I heard the dog barking in the background. That's our second there, right, right there.
That's a vote.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Terrific. So, um, I believe, Joe, the, is, is that all that we have for the public session?
No, we, we, we have to, wait a minute. We have to approve the audit risk, um, uh, I'm sorry, the risk committee guidelines.
We did. Yes, we did. We approved them, didn't we? Yeah.
Oh, I thought we had to do that in the public session.
We did. We just, we, we approved them in the pub, I believe we approved them right before the financial statements. Did we not?
Yes, we did. That's right.
Get up looking.
Yeah.
Forgive me.
No, no, it's okay. Don't worry about it. Um, all right, great. So if that's the case, I think the public, oh, go ahead.
Can I ask one question? Um, other than the dog, is there anybody public on this call?
Yes.
W, isn't it W?
WPS, it's Don.
It's streaming.
They're streaming it.
Okay, so, oh, that's good. I just was wondering, how do you do that? Like, in order to get it out to people? Cause I would like to like, uh, let, like individuals? Um, is there any way to get individuals other than streaming? Or how do you let people know that it's streaming?
Well, it is on our board website.
Okay.
And they can click on the meeting, um, once the minutes become available, they can click on it.
It's also published in Penn State Today.
In Penn, Penn State Today.
But they can't be on it live unless they go on the streaming.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so I.
The dog liked it.
Yeah, the dog loved it.
Um, all right, if that's the case, then public, I declare the public session to be over. Um, what we have, is, is what we need to do is to meet privately with management, meet privately with Deloitte, and then meet privately with, uh, the internal auditor, just as a proper protocol as an audit committee. So I would ask, um, everybody to hang up that is not part of management, um, on this, this line.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.